Calling the May thirteenth general government meeting to order. First up on the agenda, we need to approve, well, we need to approve, first thing, we need to approve our agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Motion to support to adopt the agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. We're at public comment for the general government meeting. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Apparently, there's no public comment. We'll move to committee items. We are at committee minutes for last month. Need a motion and support to approve the meetings. The minutes for last month. We have a motion by Snell, support by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Meeting minutes, ayes pass. Thank you. We'll move on to B, which is appointments. For the month of May, we have one set of appointments. This will be for the Upper Grand River Watershed Alliance. It's public seats, so five of them, five. It's a bit confusing here. We have five seats, five applicants with one vacant. Can you explain that?
She forgot to take the vacant out.
Huh?
From what it's looking like, she forgot to take the vacant out.
Okay.
Because there's only five public seats.
Yes, that's how I read it. Okay. Okay, we have five seats up for a new membership. We have five members are the same as last month, or last year. We have Jeff Snyder, Sheeka Singh, Kenny Price, James Seitz, and Todd Zeller. They have all reapplied, so I'd like to move them forward all as one group.
Move to forward the applicants to the full board with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. That'll, pardon me?
You're ready to discuss, not going to comment.
Okay. That'll be for a new term that expires in May of 2026. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
I attended their meeting last week, and from that meeting, I gather, there are six people on there, and they have another person who they anticipate will be applying, even though I see how it's here. I think maybe she, the vacant is correct, and maybe she just forgot to add public seat because they told me there were six.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll pass those five on for, to the full committee for application, or appointment. We, do we vote? Okay, we need to vote on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. And there's one vacant position that we don't have an applicant for yet. So they will do that next month or before the Tuesday meeting. Thank you, Board. We'll move on to item C, Conservation District. This will be their semi-annual report.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Uh, not bad.
Good.
I did leave camping to come here, though, just so y'all know. So I haven't been here since September, so I have a little bit to talk about. Our spring tree sale is completed for 2024. We had an increase, again, entirely due to our online store, I do believe, but we were up to 455 customers this year, which is pretty huge. We usually have about 300. Sales were up by eight percent from last year and 24% since 2022. Our no-till grass grain drill rental, I had reported four landowners, we now have six, so that is, that's going well. Household hazardous waste collection, our next event, our first event for this year is coming up on May 21st, but I haven't, last year, I didn't have the final numbers when I reported. Our last event was September 21st last year. We collected 18,000 pounds of hazardous waste. We had almost 50,000 pounds for the whole season. Let's see, Project Red this year, I was on the planning committee for that. It was a teacher contact. The event was held on April 23rd. We had a record-breaking year for Project Red with over 1,400 students from Jackson County schools, and one school from Stockbridge, and one from Leslie that participated. So that was a huge success this year. Earth Day Celebration in the Park was on April 20th. It was pretty crappy weather that day. We did have a couple hundred people show up anyway, so that went well. Native plant sale, that has increased significantly, too, because of the online sales. Actually, the pickup for that was just last week. We had a winter stonefly hunt in February where we did, we monitored two sites in Jackson County, and we just had our spring adopt a stream as well on May 4th, where we did two sites as well. We had a total of nine volunteers for those events. We do currently still have nine grants for the district. I had reported in my report to you guys that the, our, the number one, the Conservation Technical Assistance Initiative grant was currently under review by NRCS, and they may be removed. However, he, or they have decided that they are going to renew that. So I have been, I passed Sea Ty Tech Left in February for a job with NRCS and went to Colorado, so I haven't had a person in that position. I was just given permission to hire, so that will be posted this week. Let's see. NRCS News, for all of you that don't know, we are in the same office with NRCS. They give us space to have, we help them promote their programs and stuff, and they give us office space. So that's the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So what they do is very important to the state, so I have been reporting, I think, just once a year on their numbers as well. So, so far this year, $771,000 in conservation practices were funded for future implementation on over 2,000 acres in the county. Seventy-seven practices from previous contracts were installed, with $288,000 of cost share dispersed. Thousands of acres of lands benefited from these efforts, just in Jackson County. And I listed some of the practices, that they include cover crops, nutrient management, filter strips, and other things like that. Some upcoming events that we have, like I mentioned before, are hazardous waste collection. We do have one coming up on May 21st, another in July, and then our last in September. Adopt a Highway will have two events this summer. Learning Fair will be in July. Scrap tire collections, we do have, there are countywide collections this year. Last year, I think we had 16 out of the 19 townships participate. This year, it's 12, and that's not a bad thing, because they're running out of tires to collect, which is, which is good. So we are having a few townships decided to just do it every other year to participate, because they weren't collecting its money. The countywide collection will be on Saturday, July 24, or July 27th, excuse me, at the fairgrounds. We'll be at the fair, we'll have our fair booth at the Jackson County Fair, and we will also be at the Birds, Blooms, and Butterflies Festival. And a couple, a couple things I forgot to put on here, we are part of the Community Plant Sale, which is coming up this Saturday. We will have an invasive species booth, and also, we are offering opportunity for people to, for soil sampling. We are doing soil sampling at the district as well. And our MICD Conference, Michigan Association of Conservation District Summer Conference is coming up in June, and we're also, we have a legislative day as well, where board members and myself, last year, we went and sat down with each one of our senators and representatives that serve Jackson County, and kind of talked to them, and tell us, tell them what we do, how very important that we are, and asked them for continued support. So that is coming up as well. Do you have any questions?
I have one for you, Lori.
Yes.
The hazardous waste collection event in May.
Yep.
The date, you said, is the 21st?
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
And what's the location?
So, Jackson County Department of Transportation lets us use their side lot on the corner of Chantor and North Elm Street. So we, it's kind of right there by the scales. They let us use that facility.
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't hear that.
The DOT on the corner of Chantor, Chantor Road and North Elm. It's the, there's Scale Building.
Is that MDOT?
Yeah. No, Jackson County.
MDOT.
Jackson, yeah, Jackson County.
MCDOT.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll put that out of the townships when I go around this week.
Okay, yeah, I can, it's on our Facebook page, and it's, we're going to be on the radio and all this fun stuff, too, so I can send you a flyer if you'd like me to.
Any questions for Margie?
Good morning, Lori.
Good morning.
The plant sale that's this Saturday?
Yes.
What's the location?
It's at the fairgrounds in barn number three, from eight to 12. And that's a men's garden club, Jackson County Master Gardeners, women's garden club, Wendy Hill Farm, Wendy something Farms will be there. Did I get that right? See, okay.
There'll be tool sharpening also.
Yes, tool sharpening.
If you need that done for a small donation. So, yeah, it works out very, very well.
It's a great event. They have tons of different plants for sale for very good prices. So is the Career Center going to have any plants this year?
The Men's Garden Club, today, tomorrow, and Thursday, will be transporting everything that is left over, from the Career Center sale that happened the last two weekends to the fairgrounds. We will be making that available. We return that money to them for their scholarship fund, so the money 100% from that part of the sale goes to it. And then the profits of the Men's Garden Club, up to $2,000, is used for scholarship funds for anyone who's attending school that is a horticultural, biological, or ag-related scholarship program, and that's put on through the Career Center, but any high school graduate can apply.
All right. Any other questions?
Any further questions for Lori? I have one further question.
Yes.
The hazardous waste, what's the time on that?
It goes from one to six. And we do do a reservation process, so if anybody needs a reservation, they can give us a call, or there's a reservation site right on our website. It's very easy to sign up. That way, nobody's waiting in line. That's why we went to the three times a year, because people were waiting like two and a half hours in a line, and they didn't like that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Who can receive your report?
Have a motion, do I have a support?
Um.
Okay. We have a motion to support to receive our report from Lori. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same, passes unanimously. Next up, we have the fair semi-annual report. Welcome, Denise.
Good morning. Well, 2024 is going to be a great year for the fair. We've actually started off with a very positive note. We have a new collaboration with the Symphony that we did for the first time in February, where we had the very first candlelight concert for Jackson County, and we had it right here in this building in the ballroom. We, Steve Trojan and I, from the Symphony, we were very fortunate that everybody wanted to come to that, and we sold out the show, and had to put a second show on, and sold that show out, too. So because of the, the great collaboration, we are actually doing two more. One will be in December of this year. It will be not only pop Christmas music, but traditional Christmas music, and that room is going to be beautiful. It'll, again, it'll all be lit by candlelight. And then we're going to do another one with Beatles tunes in February, and I expect that to also sell out like our last one did. So if no one attended, they definitely want to attend one of these, too. And we actually made some money off that. We made almost $6,500 netted for the fair, so that's a very positive. But the Beer Fest was even better this year. It was the biggest one we've had so far. Our attendance, it was increased because we actually brought in a bunch of new brewers, which really made a big difference. It, it was phenomenal. We had no issues. I also added spirits this year, very limited basis, but people loved that opportunity. And for the fair, it, it was, it was kudos to, to that team, because it takes a lot of people to put that on. And a couple that actually joined me as a gentleman, his company goes and cleans lines at different bars, he contacted and was in contact with a number of folks across mid-Michigan, and so that's where some of our new brewers came from. And they've all committed already to come back for next year. The fair actually netted over $45,000 for that, so I feel, I feel like that little is a very positive thing, because, one, it's a, it's a great event, a five-hour event, tons of fun, very safe, no issues. And this money that we do this event for is for the premium account. I know I say it every year, but that premium account is what pays the monetary ribbons that our 4H, FFA, and open class folks are awarded during the fair. And we are getting very close to being able to 100% fund that particular program. And as Lori talked about, Project Red has been going on since before I was even there. This year was the biggest year. It was phenomenal. Again, we had great weather on both sides of this event, so we dealt with a little rain and a, and a little cold breeze, but it was a ton of fun. We had, on the next slide, we had, we had a new person, oh, sorry, I must have messed up. Anyway, we had this big giant guy dressed in a corn costume, and I, you can see him right down there in the corner. The kids couldn't have had more fun with this guy, you know, and so they're really adding, Project Red Farm Bureau is who sponsors this program, and every year, they, they bring something new and more exciting, so it's, it's a very fun event. Fair Week is August 4th through the 10th. I'm, I'm sure if you don't know that yet, you certainly will see that more and more in the coming weeks. And obviously, everyone's aware that we've, some changes from 2024. We've, we've moved away from the big music acts. It's, you know, we have seen this trend happening, and we're not the only fair that this is happening to, and I, I can tell you, though, that you will hear music on the fairgrounds every day. It'll be either on the small stage, or our new and improved hospitality tent, where I'm going to have some talent in there for a couple hours every night. So you're, you're going to hear music at the Jackson County Fair. It's just going to be very, very good quality local music. However, our Taylor Swift Experience, we paid for that show several weeks ago, so that is, I'm, I'm loving this, because I'm getting, I'm getting people, grandmas, moms, and dads that are like, this is going to be my kid's first concert, we're so excited, and, and I think that it's going to prove to be, we're going to put it in, it's, it's a ticketed event, we're going to put it inside the, the grandstand on our small stage, the Keighley Park stage, and so it'll be, obviously, a lot less production to put this on, but we're, we're excited about it. Now sponsorships for the Jackson County Fair are an important piece to try to make sure that we're very, you know, that we're, we're very protective of the fair, and I, matter of fact, that's why I'm dressed so nice today. It wasn't for you guys, I'm actually going out and begging again today. But we, and I'm finding that since we are doing some of these smaller acts, I'm, I'm getting the opportunity for folks to say, yeah, I want to, I want to sponsor that, that particular music program, because I think our community also understands how good it is to, to see the, the local talent from, from not only Jackson, but our first local talent is called My Boy Leroy, which is a bluegrass band, which will be in the hospitality tent on Sunday, and so I've already gotten a sponsorship for that, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm shooting for. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware, this is just from last year, our sponsors, that most of these logos stay up there year after year, because most of them come back. I do have some new ones that I'm going to be adding to this sheet that aren't on there, but I'm very appreciative to all these folks that have continued to stand by the fair. And I always throw this picture in because I'm super proud of what we look like Fair Week, and a big part of making us beautiful is Chris Witten, who works to make sure that Keighley Park and its buildings look the best that they could possibly look. Our lineup for this year is the rodeos coming back on Sunday, all things horses. This is going to be an opportunity for those folks, draft horse. I've always thought that we never give enough note, or enough representation to our draft horse folks, because they'll, it's so phenomenal to watch those big giant beasts out there. So we're putting them in front of the grandstand to do their showing. They always show on Monday, so we're going to add to that. We're going to have the draft horse show, then we're going to have a hitch expedition, so that, you know, if you've never seen those big wagons, like the Clydesdales and everything else, we have those at Jackson, and we're going to make a special program to set that out for Monday. And then we're bringing in the mini horse pulls for the evening, and it's going to be all free. There's no, no charge, you can come and go. We're also going to be involving our 4H and our open class horses. They're going to do some sort of program during that day, so that schedule will be coming out, where, where everybody's trying to get plugged into what they're going to do, but that'll be a fun day. And we did change our senior day to Sunday, so if anyone could make sure that they share that with their churches, and any senior programs that you might be going to, because it has been on Monday for a long time, but it really made more sense to move it to Sunday. I don't really see too many older generation folks on the midway, and we don't have a midway on Sunday, it starts on Monday, so it really makes more sense to move that to Sunday. Then on Wednesday, we have the Taylor Swift Experience. On Thursday is a new FMX program. These are all national touring programs. And Friday, we're bringing back the tractor pulls, and I've had a lot of folks that are excited about that. Now, there's the initial year for tractor pulls, there's a few expenses that, that we won't incur year after year, but it does require, like, certain machinery, and the biggest thing is clay. So we're working on, we do have some clay, but we're working on, hoping to even get that sponsored. If that's the case, yay. But if not, it'll be a one-time, first-year expense. And then we're finishing up our fair week with demolition derby, which traditionally is what we've done, and traditionally, that's one of our biggest netted shows, so I'm excited that we can go back to putting that on Saturday. And as always, we have other things going on during Fair Week that don't cost the patron once they come through the gate. A lot of free, there's a lot of free entertainment, obviously, at the fair, but we have two shows that we've, we purchased at different conferences. The first one is Hog Diggity Dog Show, so there will be camels that can be seen from Ganson Street, because part of the hog diggity is, we've got camels, there's a ginormous hog, and then there's trick dogs. I know you all laugh, but this is what people love at the fair. And we're actually going to put that in a new location. It's going to be at the south end of the event center, when that great big green space, the county administrator hates to see that big green space with nothing there, so we found a show that will fit perfectly there. Then we have Dan Dan, the farmer man. I don't make these names up, this is what they are. And actually, this is not only a static show, where it'll be over by the birthing barn stage, but it's, it's a strolling show. So he'll go out an hour or so before his performance, and he'll just be out there in this really fun-looking truck to bring people over to, to watch that. And I know that north, the north end of the grounds will be super excited about that. And like I stated earlier, we'll have a variety of music shows in different locations, not only on the Keighley stage, but in the hospitality tent. And we all know the sight, sounds, and smells of fair. And it's funny, because after I did this the first time at the Parks Board, when the smells, and that's not what the pig show is, that's, you know. And we always, for the last three years, we've done a very special day that is not put out there publicly. It's, it's, we work with Disability Connections and the ISD, but it's, we have a new name for it with the help of American One Credit Union, it's Fair Fun and Inclusion. And this, this is one of those days that if you come down, and, and it does take a number of volunteers, you come down and you participate in this one time, you are going to insist on being there every year. The faces, I mean, most of our staff are crying by the time everybody gets there. We unload like 60 buses of folks that come from different areas, and we shut the fair down, it doesn't open till 1:00 that day, and our midway works with us to have certain opportunities for, for folks with different abilities to be able to ride, and the sounds are turned way down, and there's not a lot of blinking lights and that kind of thing. But really, like everybody else, most of those kids want to make sure that they're going to get a chance to go to food court. So food court opens early, and a lot of our vendors have offer specials to the, to the folks, but they all want to have french fries, or, you know, cotton candy, so, but that, it's a, it's a very, very fun day, and American One has, has really stepped up and wanted to be a big part of this, so we're, we, every year, we're adding new things, but we get all the participants a goody bag that has a number of different things in there, so it's a very, very fun day. And our 4H and FFA area is also involved in that. They do stations where they offer opportunities to have hands-on to a number of their animals to, to be able, for the kids and, and the adults, to be able to get up close and personal with their, their animals. And this is just a few pictures, just showing, it's, it's, it's just really a wonderful opportunity. And we're continuing with the historical walkthrough under the grandstand. This year, we're hoping to add a little bit of some of our Centennial Farms in Jackson, so I'm working on that right now, but we, we had a lot of, a lot of folks that enjoyed looking at the antique tractors, so that was a big draw under there. I had all of the, you know, all of the entertainment, I'm going to continue having that, because it's a, certainly a huge piece of our rich history, so historical walkthrough, that'll, it, it'll be just updated a little bit. The fair book, which I literally left my office, not from camping, but from working on the fair book at my desk, it goes live on the 15th of May. That's when folks can start putting their entries in for the fair, they can just go, we do print out a few copies, and we do charge if you want the entire book, I think it's $5 to print the whole thing, but mostly, we print out different departments, and people can, will stop in and say, I just need antiques, so they just get the antique portion of the book, and then they don't have to have the entire book. And of course, all of that stuff is online, they can print it right at home, too. We, our fair entry program, which we started last year, was, it just, it was a godsend in regards to, there's a lot of data entry in that type of thing, when it, when it starts entry time. So fair entry was mandatory for 4H and FFA, which made a huge difference. time. So Fair Entry was mandatory for 4H and FFA, which made a huge difference. So that program went really well. We had a few bugs, which, you know, when you make a mistake, you never do it again the second time. But this year, I just finished a training where we're actually gonna get even more efficient. We're actually going to scan in the judging results. Before, pile of books would come into my office, and it would take three of us to enter all of the judging results. They're gonna scan it right there. It's gonna come to us, and all it's gonna be is a report. So we're super excited about that. And that's a program that's cost about $2,500. However, we partnered with the Extension Office with MSU, and they put us under their umbrella for this. So it's a $500 charge to the fair to have this program. And that's all I got. Any questions?
Questions, board? Thank you, thank you. Sounds like we got another great fair coming up.
Move to receive the report.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to receive the report. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Move on to, move on to finance. Welcome, Cecilia.
Good morning. So the first thing on the agenda is the amendment to the Fair Fund for, so if you kind of just take a look at it, we are reducing revenues by $1 million and $17,000, and expenditures by the same. But the biggest thing that I want to point out is that we are expecting to have revenues higher than expenditures for this year. And the overall budget is $107,459. So, any questions on the budget amendment?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the budget amendment. Then I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Plesky.
Thank you. And Cecilia, I just looked at this last night, and really, this is because of the, kind of the change in philosophy, it seems to me, that we're not doing the big, big shows.
Yes.
So, less revenue, but also less
Expenditures.
Expenses, and less, frankly, exposure to the sorts of costs we've had to incur in past years to kind of plug the hole in the fair's budget, right?
Right. And the anticipation is, we will not have to do that this year.
Right. Less exposure, less risk. Yeah. That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plesky. Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion and support to approve this. Oh, okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Next up, we have the monthly finance report.
All right. So where we're at is our first quarter. And as you can see, we, our expenditures are below our target of 25%. We're at 24.7%, which is good. And then our revenue is also above the three-year average. We're 11.2% right now, and normally, we're usually at 11%. So quarter in looks really good for our general fund. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions, comments? Earl, you have a question on finance?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, but no.
Well, thank you. You're off easy. Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the report. We have a motion by Snell, support by Plesky. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Next up, we have Facilities. Good morning, Derek.
Morning. I am here to request a motion to approve the purchase of a 2024 GMC Sierra 2500 work truck for the Jackson County Facilities Department through the My Deal Program from Todd Wensel Buick GMC of Westland, Michigan for $45,878.
That comes with the plow and everything.
Excuse me?
That comes with the plow.
Yes.
Yeah, that's pretty good buy. Okay, any questions on this? We're replacing our old retired truck.
I'll support, then I got a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Snell, support by Plesky. Go ahead, Earl.
I think the only question is whether this is an action item or it goes to full board. This is action, because it's under 50?
Under 75.
Under 75? That's the only question I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion and support? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Item H, Information Technology, County Broadband. Welcome, Ben.
Good morning. So I wanted to get in front of you, here to provide you an update with where we are with the broadband committee work. As you might remember, we had formed this committee in order to help Jackson County maximize the potential grant revenue coming in from the new BID grant opportunity from the federal government down to the state, where we had almost $1.5 billion coming to Michigan. We didn't have a lot of the details when this process started. Not all of the grant language had been approved at that point, but we knew we wanted to get in front of it to be able to make sure that all the stakeholders were informed, that we were able to, you know, gauge where the vendors were at, and be able to see where we could throw our support, where it made sense to do so. Originally, we were hoping to be providing actual recommendations back to the board by the time we were in this meeting. However, as in a lot of the cases when we're dealing with, you know, federal and state organizational things that are new, the grant process suffered a few delays. And then after they did get their initial piece approved, we reached out to vendors. We started looking at the broadband eligibility map that the state created to show which addresses were going to be eligible to receive funding for vendors that wanted to go build to them. The problem became that none of the vendors we talked to were willing to work in Jackson County after seeing that map, because some, particularly one wireless broadband provider went out and had claimed almost the entire county, along with many other counties in southern Michigan. This took the number of eligible addresses down by anywhere from 8,000 to 12,000 addresses lowered, depending on which set of numbers we're looking at. Either way, it was a huge impact. It left very few areas that were even open for funding opportunities. And so we kind of had to pivot, change our focus to how can we address that. The state did allow for a process to challenge that map and be able to say, were they actually able to provide services to those areas? After looking at the type of service being offered from a technology perspective, and consulting with other counties and with other organizations, we believed that they were vastly overclaiming what they could really provide services to at the rates they were claiming. So we set about collecting evidence and seeing what we could do in order to initiate that challenge process and get to be as successful as we could with it. We worked with townships, schools, libraries, businesses, on how we can get that word out. Because in addition to the work my team was gonna do from our end at the county, to try and trigger area challenges, to bring over a bulk of these issues, individual people could also submit their own challenges through merit networks, had set up an ability to get things out to the state. So with all of that in combination, our team alone was able to submit over 285 valid challenges to the state, which, based on the grant rules, should trigger these area challenges for a large portion of the county. Right now, we're waiting to hear back on what the results of those challenges are gonna be. At this point, I believe we have to wait another two weeks where the vendor that was challenged has the opportunity to rebut those challenges. We haven't seen any action from that vendor as yet, and there is a significant amount of work they would have to do in order to provide site surveys to generate the evidence that they would need to do to overcome these challenges. The bulk of the evidence that we gathered was actually from their own website, by putting in people's addresses, and then saying, you know, can you provide service to this area? On the map, they claimed they could. On the website, in most cases, it would say, you might be able to get it. And we actually had some people that went out, tried to schedule appointments that were within these service areas. And, you know, they either didn't get the appointments, or had the appointment scheduled, and then found out they couldn't receive services there. But again, on the maps, they were all claiming that they could. So we worked with, due to the extensive amount of overreach, we worked with Calhoun County, Ingham County, and a few other organizations, to make sure that the NTIA, which is running the grant program from the federal level, the state, and the FCC were aware of the challenges that this was causing us, by virtue of their overclaiming and oversubscribing on these areas. So the end result of it, if we want to look at the map, these are the areas that, unless there are successful rebuttals, these are the areas on the map that we are able to trigger these challenges, and we can try to reclaim these for federal funding. Some of the areas we weren't able to get were either because those were already very heavily claimed areas, and, like, within the city where Comcast and other vendors were already very prevalent. Our main focus was to try and hit the rural areas with the resources we had, to make sure that, you know, if this company was the only one that was claiming services, we wanted to make sure that these people were able to still be eligible for funding. Few of the areas, the company was able to actually show they were providing services, and in some of the areas, nobody was claiming services. So that's the explanation for why some of the areas we were not able to trigger a challenge in, because there just wasn't enough evidence in those areas of the county.
The white areas are claimed, and the blue areas are not.
The blue areas are challenged, based on what we've been able to submit. And so the white areas were areas where we could not initiate a challenge. And like I said, there's a variety of reasons why. Either they did have evidence that they could provide services there, or that they had never claimed there in the first place, or there was already heavy broadband presence there, from other providers. That one is a standalone case. Part of the rule set with this is that, in order to prevent any double-dipping with federal funds, any programs that have come out in the last few years that have been committed but not yet built, were not eligible to receive funding under this grant. And a large chunk of that census block group has already been awarded to, through RDOF funding. And I think Connect Michigan was the other funding source that had been applied out there. So between those two grants in that area, there's a couple of vendors that have already been awarded that. But I don't believe it's being built out until 2026 or 2027 right now.
Could you share with the board who's on the committee, just for reference?
Yes. We have, for representation, we've got Brad Hess from Jackson County ISD, got Bill Sutherland from Norville, David Sands from Concord Township. We have Ryan Tarrant from the Chamber, Andy Lane from the Library. He's their IT director over there. And as a member of the public, we have Chris Little, and I believe that is everybody. Yes.
Could you share with us who this vendor that's got, claims he has all this business is?
The vendor in question is Mercury Wireless. They claimed a large chunk of about 12 counties in Michigan.
Never heard of them.
We had not before this process either.
Are they a legitimate business?
They are a legitimate business. They primarily operate in Indiana. They do have some Michigan presence. And like I said, we were able to find some locations that they did have services, and are actually providing services at the rates they list. But we just feel that, well, the process that this map was developed using was from a voluntary map created by vendor-submitted data to the FCC originally. So there was no limitations on that. It was all self-delivered information. There was really no checks on it at the FCC level at that point. And so essentially, what a lot of wireless providers did, that people are finding out, is they would just take the technical limitations of what they had and say, okay, everything within two miles of my towers, or three miles of my towers, I'm gonna claim as serviceable. But with wireless technology, that's not the same as saying that it's gonna work with fiber optic cable. Fiber, it's easy. Did you run it there or not? With wireless, is there a big hill in front of that neighborhood between there and my tower, to where, you know, half of the neighborhood's not gonna get service from me? Are there really tall trees surrounding the house? It really comes down to a site-by-site level of how much of a connection you're gonna get, and if you can get a connection.
Commissioner Plesky.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I, this, their claim to have this kind of service smacks of fraud to me, is, well, and I wonder why the Attorney General hasn't dove into this, because it seems to me she's ready to attack anything that has a whiff of impropriety. And we've heard zero. And are congressmen aware of this process?
We made very clear to LEO, which is running the My High Office, which is administering the grant, what the concerns were with this process. And that was joined by several other counties as well.
Good, good.
And again, like I said, this also did go in front of the FCC Waste, Fraud, and Abuse Committee as well.
Good, excellent.
We have not heard any results back from that yet, but our data was submitted as part of that presentation.
Thanks for your efforts. It's, I mean, I, my area is the southwest quarter of the county, and it's all blue, with the exception maybe of Spring Arbor. But the service out there is uniformly terrible. And if you can get it, unacceptably expensive. So thanks for the work you guys are doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
One other thing I'd like to make a note of, just is to update on our timelines. Originally, we had looked at this process to end, and the committee's worked to end by June. With this being pushed back a few months, and the state has been responsive in extending our deadlines for submitting things based on what we had been discovering. So I will say the state was accommodating in that regard. We are looking at and anticipating this process now going through August. We're hopefully gonna be doing the same work with the vendors, once we can get confirmation on how much, or, you know, hopefully, all of these areas we can get reverted back to be available for funding.
So how much, how much is the timeline extended?
We're anticipating August at this point, because we've had a slip of about, you know, two months' worth in the deadlines that we've seen so far.
Is there, Commissioner Chatwell?
Let's go in a different direction. Let's say that they decide that these people have legitimate claim to this, and the business is able to provide it. How do we then work with this Mercury company to make sure that we're getting, our constituents are getting the internet service that they need?
There's going to be limited levers available at that point, if, if in fact, that is the case. So if they're able to show proof that they're providing it to these areas, and people can get it in those areas, they're not gonna be applying for any of the grants. So there's not, there's not gonna be any additional permitting or any other work that they're gonna be needing from us, or from any other involvement from our end. And it would be very much on a, just an individual basis level of, you know, realistically, what we'd be doing then at that point is just making sure that that company's contact information was out there to these areas, and saying, go call them and get them out here to come do a site survey.
Ben, could we award a county franchise for this?
I don't believe these exact agreements come under a franchise. In theory, what we can do with the grant is we can choose to throw our support behind a single vendor. That helps them out with their, with their funding levels. I believe we have a 7% sway in terms of local support, is what's going into the grant process. Outside of there, I have not looked into whether or not we're able to do a, like, full countywide franchise outside of that grant process.
Well, if we were, we wouldn't have to award it based upon size or the majority of customers. But who would be in the best interest of the county to provide their service? And we, of course, knowing they apparently are fraudulent, they wouldn't be in the best interest.
I will say that some of the actions the company has taken have not necessarily been I will say that some of the actions the company has taken have not necessarily been, I'm going to say altruistic. I will say though, that the final makeup, once this grant has come and gone, once everything's out of there, we will need multiple sources of technology to really get to everyone. The state is doing their best to make sure that they're going to get fiber infrastructure as, to as many people as possible in this grant and the stated goal is to get it to everyone. Personally, just knowing the geography and some of the challenges that different areas of the state are going to be working with, I don't know that you're going to ever get to 100% on fiber with private vendors doing that work because at some level, the math doesn't make sense. And so, that's where there will be a place for wireless providers and some of these other ones, whether it's this one or somebody else, whether it's a T-Mobile or Verizon or somebody else that's able to offer similar types of services, that would remain to be seen.
It's a great concept, great idea, what you're working on. I hope we can pull it off. People really need it. My, my service in Norville Township is like, you have better luck turning it off and working off the data or something. Okay, any further questions for Ben? Okay, I need a motion and a second to receive his report.
So moved.
Motion by Walz, support by Plesky. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, we'll move on to other business. We have the claims. Need a motion and support to pay the claims? Motion by Plesky, supported by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Other minutes? We have a reporting schedule for next month. We have finance, of course, treasurer quarterly, parks annually and clerks annually for next month, to look forward to them. Public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Last call for public comment. Committee member comment? Any committee member comment? Apparently there are none. All in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye.